Hello. Good evening, everybody. Everybody's ready? We're going to get started. Welcome to the Town of Albany. At this time, I am going to reconvene the Selectmen's Meeting. My name's Kathy Golding. I am the Chairperson of the Selectmen. This is Jen Spofford and Kelly Robitell, my co-Selectmen. Before I turn the meeting over to the Department of Transportation, I'd like to put forth a few of the rules of the meeting. As per our rules of procedure, public comment will be limited to three minutes. Please keep your comments brief to the point and respell. A speaker may not speak a second time until everyone has had the chance to speak to the subject at hand. At two and a half minutes, I will raise my hand. Please complete your thoughts and let the next person speak. All speakers shall be asked to come to the podium. Oh, not to the podium. There'll be a microphone passed around, so please begin to the microphone. And then please announce your name and where you're from or your affiliation. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Jason Ayotte, Professional Engineer and Project Manager for NHDOT.
My name is Jason Ayotte. I'm the Department of Transportation Project Manager for the Albany 29597 project, which you can see there are two role plans up on the back partition wall, which is basically the entire limit. So on the near side, where most police officers are standing, is really the southern limits and on the backside of the wall. So really, the goal tonight is to seek public input on this project. And I certainly want to recognize that we've been planning some of this for a period of time. I want to thank the town for their efforts in helping us set this meeting up, as well as making themselves available for us to understand some of the concerns. This is an important project for the department, and we certainly recognize that the crashes that occurred in August. The purpose of tonight's meeting is not necessarily to specifically speak about that, but to hear what your concerns are for the entire length of the corridor. We have a number of different handouts for everybody, but I think the most important one for me is the survey card, which is the postcard size. You are welcome to fill that out as you are listening. And we're going to have an opportunity to stand up at the role plans and basically identify some of your real priority areas, where you'd like to see some of the improvements made. But really, this is important for us to be able to continue moving the project forward and determine the most reasonable improvement for the corridor. So with me tonight, I have Melly Doobie. She's our Environmental Manager for the project. So she has a couple of different handouts specific to what she'll be speaking with tonight. We have Nick Altanega. I'm sorry. Altanega, from North Country Council. And he's probably your most important link to be able to look for additional funding in the tenure plan. We're currently in that cycle now, where the towns are proposing priorities. So Nick is an advocate for you, and it's really important for you to make that connection. Also with us in the back of the room is Leah Savage. She is the group leader. She's responsible for the design and the quality assurance that it meets the rules and regulations and helps us move the project forward. We also have John Hebert. He's a Senior Engineer. John has the most experience on the project, and he's a wealth of knowledge. So if you do have some specific questions about what we have found through our data collection process, he is the person to ask. We also have Julie Avanat, who's Senior Design Engineer. And she has been really moving the project forward for us to get to this point. And I really thank everybody for attending. So again, the real focus of our job tonight is to solicit input. And so the way we structured this meeting, it's not your typical select board, where we will have a Q&amp;A session to kind of cover all the bases, but we do have a specific, I'll call it somewhat more of a charrette, where we actually want you to come up and we want you to put where your concerns are on the map. And we'll have some stickers. Leah, John, Julie, Melly and I will help facilitate that. We can offer some questions in a few minutes. But I kind of wanted to explain generally what you're looking at tonight. The first thing that I'll speak to is this handout that's our project development process. For those that have experienced Department of Transportation federal highway projects in the past, this is a process, and it does take time for us to go through. When the project enters a tenure plan, that doesn't mean that we can necessarily work on the project. Funding becomes obligated in certain years. So although there is a considerable history for this length of corridor, being in and out of the tenure plan, but this most recent tenure plan, we didn't have obligation authority to spend money until 2018, 2019. So most of the effort for the project that's known as the 29597 project really didn't start till then. So we have a number of years that we need to go through, but the most important milestone for us in order to proceed to contract plans is the public hearing and the NEPA process. And that's what Melly is really responsible for. She'll speak to that in a little bit. There's a number of environmental, natural and cultural resource concerns that we need to document and make sure that we address what our impacts are. And then, again, the public hearing. So if there are impacts outside of the right-of-way for New Hampshire 16 that involve private properties, we do need to identify them in advance. (mimicking a telephone ringing) Shaun, I'm not sure if this one's on. But if there are property impacts outside the right-of-way, then we...
I can try the wire run or I can project.
I can project. Is this any better? That seems much better. So if we do have project impacts outside the right-of-way, then we do need to go through a formal hearing process. And so in order for us to get there, this is step one. Step one is to solicit input from everybody to make sure that we're spending the money in the most reasonable, most practical place. Just to give an idea, we do have other projects of similar scope and size, and generally we're running anywhere between $4 to $5 million per mile. So on this corridor between Tamworth and Conway, there's about seven miles of roadway. The tenure plan has $9.1 million in today's dollars. So that's what we've done, a fair amount of estimate. So $9.1 million will not repair or not complete the project for the entire segment. So it's extremely important for tonight to identify what the concerns are, the specific locations. What we would do after that is we're basically going to take that feedback. We're going to start to identify, hopefully, the trends that we see, and then we can start brainstorming as far as what type of project locations and the alternatives that address the concerns that we hear, as well as the other ones that we've done within the data collection phase. So once we have identified that, we'd host a second public informational, where we can come up and show you really what the cost and impacts are, that we can do a project for roughly $9.1 million. It may be one location, maybe it's two locations or three locations that make sense, and we would come and present that. And then, following that, we would then go through and refine it to basically identify what the true impacts are, what the costs are, and then identify what the hearing is. So today, again, from a vision standpoint, as far as what we're hoping for, is that you'll be able to provide that input for us to make the best decision possible for the corridor and for honestly, the greater good. So again, a couple of key milestones for us that are identified in the project development process are that hearing and the NEPA process, and Melly can kind of speak to that. The other, we already talked about the survey card. The other thing is the fact sheet. That kind of gives you a sense, and I'll speak to that now. Again, today, the idea beyond what I'm going to speak to from a project information, we'll basically next get up. Again, we've got the entire corridor from the Tamworth Town Line all the way up to Conway. We'll basically take 15, 20 minutes, or if we need a little bit longer, for everybody to basically go up there and point onto what they think is their primary concern, where they live, as well as what some other concerns they may have. Now, if it's a length of roadway, Julie, John, Leah, myself, and Melly will be able to, we've got markers and we can kind of fill that out. Again, you know, specific ideas and concerns, we can certainly talk about that. Once we sort of adjourn from that, Melly will give a brief overview of the data collection that we've done to date, go through some of the other opportunities there are for public input. And then, basically, we'll go through a Q&amp;A session relevant to those specific stickers and ideas that you put up on the, just so that we can get a better sense. And when we do that, I would ask that you identify yourself and where you live, just so that we can record our notes. And then lastly, we do have the Q&amp;A, so for some general, I'm sure there's going to be some thoughts about funding and the next exercises and things that we need to do or what we should be looking at, and I guess we'll allow the board to sort of moderate that and make sure. So again, we've got a little bit of information as far as the existing condition. On the back, Melly's going to speak to a little bit of that, but also, I think, the bottom lines, those considerations. So that's really just food for thought for you as you are thinking about the input that you want to put on the survey card for us, just to kind of give you a sense that, you know, really, these are the things that we look at, we're going to consider. We've got traffic counts that we've asked for. We have the crash history from the Department of Motor Vehicles that we've requested. We're looking for a supplement over the next 30 to 60 days in order to make sure that we collect the 2020 and 21 crashes. We certainly have done survey. As many of you probably have seen, we've had our surveyors out here. We've also had our utility coordinators to identify what the potential impacts are. There's a lot of different resources, a lot of different aspects of the project that we need to consider. So I guess that last, design and safety considerations, that's in green, is really to kind of give you some ideas to start brainstorming and identify what you possibly can fill out with the survey card. So I think with that, I'll ask the team if there's anything else that I missed that's really important to communicate right now, but I would ask that all of you, we have some stickers. Julie and John, if you can get up and sort of take sides, and then I would welcome you up to the role plans to help us facilitate this discussion of input.
Do you just want to have the color coding?
Sure. Could you speak to the color coding? Make sure I don't mess it up.
All right. We have led design posted by each of the role plans. By the way, with the color codes, what we're asking you, if you have home or business along the corridor, if you identify that with blue, the red would be your primary concern along the corridor.
Sorry. I'm going to start over. We're going to ask that you use the blue stickers to identify if you have a home or business along the corridor. The red would be your first or top priority concern along the corridor. The yellow would be your second priority concern. And the green sticker, if there's any area that you think functions well or where the traffic is flowing well. So we're going to pass these around and then ask you to come up to the role plan and put your stickers down, and then we'll see where the data falls and ask some questions about it. Thanks.
Would if you have a business in a home, say, property? Would you stick a sticker on?
Pretty much. You could get special stickers covered.
Why? I don't know.
It's a good question. I think one sticker would cover it, though.
I have a sticker.
Just one. Just the one blue one.
I think one would identify for...
Yeah, one sticker. It's really to kind of identify. We know that New Hampshire 16 is where you live, work, and where many people play. Everybody uses this. So it's really to give us an idea of who was here, to be honest with you. The red, yellow are really the most important things for this little exercise.
Thank you. Sorry. I forgot to speak.
No. No problem.
We did that. Yes. Welcome, mother. I'm impressed. You're fine. Oh, sorry. (laughter)
We've been doing this for about 15 minutes. I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance. So a couple of things. Even if you don't live on the corridor, you're welcome to put a sticker. This is not just about people that live here. It's about people that use the corridor. So I know some people were apprehensive about stepping to the and putting a sticker where they might have a concern. This is for you as well. If you're utilizing it for work or recreation, weekdays and weekends, it's really important for us to understand. If you're all set and you take a seat, we may be at an opportunity where Melly can speak. Okay, we'll give about five more minutes for the map and before Melly speaks. I guess I'll just clarify a couple of questions that I've heard. So District 3, New Hampshire DOT Highway Maintenance, does maintain the roadway. So New Hampshire DOT is responsible for the mains. We have several sheds. The supervisors, main supervisors, and they're very familiar with the corridor. Many of them are first responders as well. So if anybody's wondering, the town is not responsible for New Hampshire 16. The funding is federal highway-driven. We do have a state match. Typically, for most of our projects, we use turnpike toll credits. So essentially, that's our state match, but this is funded through federal highway. So again, for every step along the way, we need to make sure that we follow federal highway and the National Environmental Protection Act through that. So there have been a couple of questions about the date of the aerial imagery. So it is 2015. I know that there's concerns about that being dated. Now, we're using, I guess, high-resolution aerial imagery, so it does show up better on our plan, but please note that we do have topographic ground survey that's been out there, so it's recent. And we're actively doing new updates. Many of you may have seen some of the surveys. So the plans that we use to generate the impacts and understand specifically what the design may need to be, we would be using topographic survey from this year, from this calendar year. So as well as the environmental data collection that's done, that's this year as well. So this is just a plan. I understand that may be some concerns about that, but this is not what we use for design. It was just really to, generally, a lot of people like, they don't understand some of our survey plans, and aerial imagery generally shows up better. So apologies if that created some discontent. So with that, I think we've got a few more people. You're welcome to get up. Melly's going to basically walk through the data collection efforts that she has, and then Julie's going to lead us through sort of the Q&amp;A, so we get a better handle on what those concerns are. Thank you.
All right. Sorry. Been a long time since I've talked into a microphone, because we were remote for so long. So it's nice to see everybody in person. As Jason said, thank you so much for coming out tonight, because the public involvement process is hugely important for us at the department, particularly for the environmental review process. So it's really awesome to see so many people here. Sometimes we come out to meetings and it's sort of crickets. So this is actually very rewarding for us to have this involvement and to get all of your feedback. So as Jason said, my name is Melly Doobie. I am the Senior Environmental Manager in our Bureau of Environment at the DOT. So I'm going to be handling all of the environmental review, compliance, coordination, and permitting for this project. So for those of you who maybe haven't worked or haven't had experience with a department project before, I'll just give a little background information about the Bureau of Environment. So our overall mission aligns with the department's mission, which is transportation excellence, enhancing the quality of life in New Hampshire. So we help support the design teams and construction and maintenance as well in really maintaining and creating, you know, a really comprehensive, safe transportation network for you to use, enjoy, promote commerce. You know, we know tourism is a huge part of the economy in this part of the state and many other parts of the state, but the Bureau of Environment also really focuses on preserving and, you know, best-case scenario, enhancing and protecting the amazing natural resources that make New Hampshire, you know, really what it is. And also, our amazing cultural resources, our historic districts, our historic houses, cemeteries, stone walls, all of the stuff out there on the landscape that really contributes to the culture and character of New Hampshire. So we have a process. Our process really similarly follows sort of the design process. If you look on your fact sheets, so right now, as everybody has said, we're sort of in the data collection phase. We're really looking for input from you, the public. You live on this corridor. You know this corridor better than anybody. So if you do have anything, you know, any questions, comments, information for me related to natural or cultural resources, please, by all means, raise your hand. My card is over on the table next to the handouts. You can take one, call me, email me, anytime. I am here as a resource for you and for the department. So once we move on from the design phase, we'll go, from the data collection phase, we'll go into the alternatives analysis phase, and that's where NEPA really gets kind of going. And Jason kind of described that process earlier, where we're going to take all the information we've collected and all of the resources that we're aware of, and basically break it down into the pros and cons of what the impacts actually look like for various alternatives that we're looking at. And hopefully, after that, we're able to identify an alternative that has sort of fully meets the purpose and need of the project, but also protects as much as possible the natural and cultural resources in the project area. After that, we'll move on to the permitting phase, and then we do also have people in the Bureau of Environment specifically that do monitor our construction projects once we're in active construction, so they make sure that any commitments or, you know, requirements that come from that permitting phase are actually being handled correctly in the field. So we really do, the Bureau of Environment really does follow the projects from cradle to grave to make sure that all the resources are identified and considered and protected as much as possible. So my role in the Bureau of Environment as the environmental manager is really sort of more of the project management tasks for the environmental-related items only. And then, we also do, so I sort of serve as kind of the liaison between the department and our designers, and then the regulatory agencies and advisory agencies, be they federal, state, or local. So we work with federal highway, US Fish and Wildlife Service, NOAA, FEMA, you know, Coast Guard. We work with Department of Environmental Services and New Hampshire Fishing Game and New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau, as well as any other local agencies and whoever else we sort of identify as having a vested interest in any resource that's in the project area. In the Bureau, we also do have, there's a few people that have my role, but we also do have some resource specialists as well on staff. So we really try to make sure that, they help make sure that we are up to date on the most current rules and regs out there, so that we can get a really comprehensive environmental review and that we are totally up to date and everything goes the way it's supposed to. So for this project, I have done sort of our initial desktop review, and I have so far walked the corridor twice now, so I'm a little bit familiar with it at this point. What?
You're scared now that you've walked that corridor. I'm not scared. I have to.
Well, let me put it this way. I forgot my safety vest the first time, and I remembered to bring it the second time. So.
Well, no. Thank you.
So there's a few resources that have sort of risen to the front of the pack in terms of what will drive the environmental review for this project. But if you do look at the fact sheet that Jason put together, which is an awesome resource, it kind of lists some of the things that we always look at for every project. So we are always looking at the water resources on the project, wetlands, streams, rivers, if there are any that are, you know, particularly especially protected. There are certain kinds, prime wetlands, floodplains, things like that. We look at water quality concerns, especially for areas if we have to widen the roadway in any way and we have an increase in impervious surface. We take that into consideration, and we will incorporate in the design facilities to treat that stormwater runoff from that impervious surface. We take into account whether there are rare threatened or endangered species in the project area. Invasive plants, we identify in case we have to impact them. We can handle them appropriately and dispose of them. We look into conservation lands and if there's contamination on the project. So it's a very, I just want to assure you that it's a very comprehensive environmental review. We look into air and noise issues. So we really try to make sure that we are respecting and appreciating everything that's out there in the corridor. So for this project in particular, we have so far identified all of the wetlands. We've done, in addition to the survey and the utilities coordinators that have been out on the project, we have also done all of the wetland delineations. So you may have seen our consultant out doing that this summer. They've identified about 50 different wetlands, several stream crossings. Some of them, you know, major crossings, we're aware of the Chakoroa River, Swift River, I think Meadow Brook is the other one. We are aware of, the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau has informed us of the locations of a few records of three different endangered plant species, which we will do endangered plant surveys for next season during the growing season. We have looked on the New Hampshire DES One Stop Database and identified a few contaminated sites that are in the project corridor. Those are usually things that are associated with, like, leaking underground storage tanks or old car crashes where there was, you know, something that was released. So we have a few that we're monitoring. We will treat those areas appropriately if we have to impact them. Right now, it's not clear that we will. We have worked with US Fish and Wildlife Service, determined that we are in the range of the northern long-eared bat and the small world Pagonia, so we'll follow the appropriate consultation for those resources as we kind of progress the design. That depends a lot on whether we have tree clearing or bridge work. Those kinds of things will come into play. And then the other major sort of driving factor behind the environmental review, as Jason mentioned earlier, is the cultural resources on the project. And that's where this public outreach really comes, becomes very important, because it looked like many of you took one of these pamphlets, because when I checked, they were all gone. So that's great. So this pamphlet discusses the Section 106 process and how to become a consulting party. So as part of NEPA, the department is obligated to follow the requirements of Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And that is an act that protects historic and cultural resources. So basically, things like stone walls, historic districts, sometimes archaeological sites, all of those would be included. And in order to be considered eligible for consideration, basically, it's just any structure over 50 years old. So I have done a review of the project corridor and identified that there are several structures, as I'm sure you're all aware, that are older than 50 years old. So the next steps for me are to coordinate with the Division of Historical Resources, let them know the locations and the ages of those structures, and they're going to basically provide us with more guidance on how to move forward with more investigations or not. And that will really play a very important role in the development of the design, because we try to sort of avoid or minimize impacts to those resources as much as possible through the alternatives analysis phase. So for the Section 106 consulting party process, if anybody, basically, if anybody does want to become even more involved in the design process, obviously, you're here at this meeting. There's going to be additional public info meetings, or at least one probably additional public info meeting and additional hearing. But if you do know of, or you are sort of have a vested interest in a historic resource and you would like to become a consulting party, that's something that you actually want to do directly with federal highway. That is a process that you would do with them. So there's instructions in the pamphlet for how to reach out to federal highway and become a consulting party. We welcome anyone that has a vested interest, so a property owner, town historic commission or other town officials, anyone that would have input on that property. So that's pretty much the quick version of what we've done so far for this project. Obviously, we are aware that it's sort of a long corridor. There's a lot out there, so we're definitely trying to keep it all in mind and weigh the pros and cons as we move forward through the project development process. So if there's any questions for me right now, I think happy to take them. Yeah, absolutely.
Can I talk again after this?
Sure. Yeah. Sorry. I'm just trying to give the design team as much time as they can to look up your data.
I own the Tanglewood Motel and Cottage, and I'm just in areas called Swamp and Front Oak.
Hi. How are you? It's Laura Goo, I'm the owner of the Tanglewood Motel and Cottage in the swamp that's right in... in front of me, before you get to me on the right, is that considered wetlands, or that be something you would consider filling in?
Well, we would never fill it in unless it was, you know, essential to the project. So unfortunately, I can't speak to your exact location, because we hired a consultant to do the delineation, so I didn't do it myself. And I received the report two days ago, so I haven't, I haven't memorized it.
So you can go back and look, it's at Mile Locus 73.
Great, I'm aware of the location that you're talking about, but I'm not familiar with the wetlands in that location.
And when you said Swift River, do you mean Swift Brook?
Swift Brook, I do apologize, yes.
Because that goes behind our house.
Yep, sorry. So, if there's any other questions about the environmental review process, or the Bureau of Environment in particular, or, please, anyone?
So at this time, we may have to swivel 180 degrees, but Julie's gonna, you know, she's looking at the plans now, where all of you had identified a number of your concerns. So, for our purposes, it's really important to understand what your concerns are, such that we can document them, and then, again, we can start to strategize on what the improvements are, or could be, to solve some of those issues. So, thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Jason. So, we've looked through where all of your dots were placed on the map, and I think we just want to step through it and ask you questions now, and ask what specific concerns there are. We're going to start at the southernmost end of the corridor. The dots are a lot more scattered in the southern segment, we don't have a lot of clusters, so it's, it's more looks like isolated concerns here and there. There are--
You all were given four stickers.
Yep.
I put mine at my house. You probably put it at the kids' house. You put yours at your house, you put yours at your house, and you put them on my house.
Yep.
So I couldn't represent.
Yeah, I understand.
But I can't show off that horrible traffic.
Right, right, right.
We need you to speak into the microphone when you're speaking.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Let's continue, thank you.
Okay, no, we understand the concern, and, you know, what we're looking for is clusters, as well as spots, and we got both on the map, so I think it was successful that way. But thank you. So I just want to ask, who identified the southern Drake Hill Road intersection as a concern, and can we hear what your specific concerns are there?
Yeah, I have a concern, it's a straightaway, and people speed up in that straightaway. So Drake Hill, I put in a request about 25 years ago to have a turnout. We've got a little bit of paving in there, but it's still pretty dangerous, and people coming from the north don't know what to do when you've got people who want to turn left coming from the north. And, you know, that, we are going to have somebody cleaned out, making a left turn. Also, you don't, you've got human fatalities, but we've had a lot of moose deaths, especially across from Lovejoy Marsh, in that same neighborhood.
Name, your name?
Oh, Bruce Larson, Old Colony Road.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. The next two dots going up the road are close to Nickerson Road, so I would ask somebody to speak to concerns around Nickerson Road?
Hi, thanks for having me, I'm Deborah Marnich, with the Chakora Lakes Conservancy, the stewardship director. And we identified some concerns on a tract of property we own, in this section, right about in this section. It is a 14-acre lot, and Mel, I am so happy that you put us on the map with the Chakora River, thank you so much. The lot is called the Burt Lot, and the Chakora River runs down the western boundary, and there is also a perennial stream along Route 16, run laterally along Route 16. And we are concerned about water quality, in both of the water bodies, and Chakora River also crosses under Route 16, at one point, and under a bridge. We're concerned about BMPs, and temporary BMPs that may be placed on this project, and also permanent BMPs as well. We have one more dot, actually, I can't forget, of another concern, across the road, where the river crosses, and then drains down south, into our watershed of the Chakora Basin. And we are overall concerned, on a landscape level, about water quality, and preserving that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a quick response in this setting, because I know we want to get through the map, but first of all, Alex and Deb, thank you for coming, and I do look forward to continuing coordination with you, via email, Teams meeting, you know, whatever we need to do. But I do thank you for raising the question about water quality. And I was chatting with another gentleman while we were doing the stickers earlier. So, to delve just a little bit deeper into the water quality question in general, it's one of the largest things that we consider, from the environmental standpoint, for our, for the design process. So, we're, we, we have been out onsite with our water quality program manager, Mark Kemerline, and he is the expert in making sure that we are following all of the necessary rules. We will be obligated to follow AOT, Alteration of Terrain Bureau, rules for this project, due to the proximity to Iona Lake, and then also to the major rivers that do, the streams, the fourth order streams that do cross under the road. So, for the permanent stormwater, likely, basically, I kind of tried to cover it quickly earlier, but wherever we are proposing to have an increase, if we do propose to have an increase in impervious surface, we'll treat that increase, I believe, usually the calculation is actually double the increase. So basically, the goal is to make sure that we're just ensuring that there's no additional load into any nearby water resources, as a result of additional stormwater runoff, from the work that we're doing. In terms of the temporary BMPs, no construction happens without those being in place, always installed, ahead of time, monitored, maintained, it's part of the wetlands rules, but also, you know, we'll like, there are many rules at play, that require the installation of those BMPs. So, we absolutely will, we'll follow the DES manual for those, as we always do. And if there's any, you know, thing really specific that you want to talk about, as the design progresses, we're happy to do so. Send you a copy of the wetlands application, you know, whatever works. So, if there's any other questions about water quality, happy to field them. At this point, it's sort of all conceptual, because we don't have a design, so.
Okay, thanks, Meli. So, the next cluster we have is, there's a curve in the road, near the Piper Trailhead access, and we've got three dots there. Is there somebody that can speak to concerns near Piper Trailhead?
My biggest concern is, I've been driving this road for many, many years, off and on, and it never fails that where the Piper Trailhead is, the hikers are looking for a place to park, but there's no place to park. So, if the state could somehow get some funds from the Forest Department, or another state agency, not the Department of Transportation, to buy a piece of land to put in a parking lot, this would greatly help, because when you're going 50 miles an hour, and all of a sudden, they're trying to find a place to park, it's a nightmare.
Did you also want to speak to Piper Trailhead?
My name's Chris Wilson, I live directly across from the entrance. And she was reiterating a lot of times, headed north, I don't know, they don't know where the Trailhead is, or anything, so, they almost stand still, trying to find the entrance way in, the trap law getting up, everybody's laying on their horn, they're running, literally I've seen them run under my front lawn, to round them, then off, traveling south, to the edge of the road runs out, so I don't know, got backed up, going down, down before it, a lot tend to pull over, right in front of the house, right here, the old store, and so they're looking for a place to pull over, and you'll see a whole gag of traffic, will come around and stuff, and again, they're blocking horns, and, I don't know, it's just a pull-off place for a lot of people, I don't know, because the doors tightened up down through and stuff. Yeah, and the only other concern I have is, this keeps your development project, and get the ten people on it, so that they're putting up with their abilities, and if it will not with you, and I'm concerned, it's not raised, down the road. That's very important, thank you.
Okay, thanks, we'll try to speak more clearly into the mic. Then we've got a stretch of road, that actually has a green sticker, and it's fairly straight, and we don't have any concerns. It leads us next, to our next cluster, at the Southern Pine Knoll Road intersection. Can anybody speak to the Southern Pine Knoll Road intersection?
Hi, my name is Dan Blake, I live by the southern entrance of Pine Knoll, there's two major campgrounds there, people are walking, hiking, and it's 50 miles an hour, that is a problem. Then you've got people pulling into Pine Knoll, if, you know, on that corner, it's just horrible, then coming out on the northern side, so, that's all I have to say. Yeah, no line of visibility around the corners, and that's the start of all the S-turns, and it's 50.
Speaker, I think they can hear me.
Howard, 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 it's for the TV.
Okay, I don't--
Howard.
Howard, you gotta use the phone. Oh, yeah, I gotta use it, okay. All right. Howard Hatch, Albany, New Hampshire, been here in Albany for 40 years, okay, drove this, drove this road, I've driven it for about 60 years, working for the Forest Service. I'm going to tell you, just the whole road is a hazard. These people that come in from off-the-side roads, they don't believe it. Come out here and spend the day on a weekend, watch motorcycles go up here at 100 miles an hour, not exaggerating now, I'm telling you the truth, passing, passing, trucks passing, tankers, okay, you name it, it's happening right here in this stretch, okay? And you can put all the buttons you want on that thing, and a few loads of gravel, and a few signs, would help this tremendously. I'm telling you, I've watched it, I drive it, I drive it every, at least five days a week, and sometimes more than five days a week. The fatalities on this thing is tremendous, and they keep on coming. The cops come down here, right after it happens, they spend a little time here, to make you think they're doing their job. My chair in my living room faces the main road, right out here. It's a no-passing lane, and I'll guarantee you, they could pay their salary, right on that strip, right up here. Okay? And another thing, he just talked about speed limit, drop the speed limit down here, go lower the speed, 50 miles an hour. This is a town, this is a town here, this is a town hall, try to get out of here in the middle of the day. Okay? Try to get out of my driveway in the middle of the day, try to get out of Todd's driveway. Sunnybrook Cottage is where the accident happened, okay, try to get in there, come on, wake up, a few loads of gravel would fix a little shoulder along there. Besides that, oh, the DOT, they come down, yes, but they don't do anything, because they're afraid to get out of the truck, they're afraid to get run over. Okay? And that's a fact, I'm not lying, I mean, and I, I think you'll find out, that probably all the blame lies right on the DOT. Why would a road not be touched since 1938? Come on, people, let's go!
Howard, you have three minutes to get it out.
At the top of my note, right here, okay, DOT at fault. Now you can believe it or not, all right? Want some more? Okay. I've had enough. If I could sell this place, and get a dollar out of it, and find another place, I'd be out of here.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard.
So I guess I'd just like to advocate for the people that are in the room, from the Department of Transportation, that we are here to advocate for you, and help you move this project forward, we're not here to be adversarial. I understand that there's been a delay, certainly can speak to that as we move forward, however, we have some hardworking folks in the room, and, and we're here to help and listen. So, appreciate the sentiment, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that we are here, we are listening, and certainly, all of the feedback is really important for us to make the best decisions at this time.
We're here to listen, we appreciate what you have to say, Howard. If we can just keep stepping through the role plan, it is really important for us to hear your feedback, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, that there's an overall concern, but it helps us with the design process if we hear about specific locations as well. So we're just going to continue. There were two red dots in a straight, well, started the curvy section along Iona Lake. Can anybody speak to the section along Iona Lake?
Hi, Sean Wadsworth, I live on Iona Lake, and it's hilly and windy, a lot of blind spots from hills, and from curves, and just want to echo what Howard said, that it seems like the most high-value thing that could be done, instead of millions of dollars per mile, is just to spend a few thousand dollars to post new speed limit signs, to lower the speed limit, would help this entire stretch. And I also want to echo what you said, that we all would have put dots up and down the whole stretch of 16. And again, the cheapest, highest value thing that you could do is just lower the speed limit.
The next location that we have highlighted is right here, in front of the Town Hall. Is there anyone that wants to speak to the concerns at Town Hall Road? You know, from what we can see, there's the alignment of the intersection, there's, you know, possible access issues, is there anything anybody wants to add about Town Hall? Okay, we're going to move on, we're heading north on the other side. And this is where the larger clusters start to show up. I would say we have our third largest cluster of dots, at the Sunnybrook Cottage, so, can somebody speak to the Sunnybrook Cottage's access?
My name's Ken Ludwig, I live north of Sunnybrook Cottage, pretty much what Howard said, I haven't been around here that long as he has, but it's like a racetrack down Every day, somebody passes over the yellow line, and the bikes, you know, one-wheel, 100 mile an hour, and we, you know, we had a terrible accident in front of, it just, if it could be like Chakora, I mean, not 30 mile an hour, maybe 40 mile an hour, like Antillwood, and other places that they're talking about, and, you know, like this gentleman said, with the signs, have, have, have designs, enforce it, that's about it, you know, you guys have much covered it. Thank you.
It's not really a cluster, but there's two yellow dots near what look like a private drive, just in front of the, all the-- drive, just in front of the Albany-Madison Town Line? Okay.
All I have to say is, they come around the turn, they've been amped up from the last passing zone because they didn't get around the people at 75, 80 miles an hour, where the three people died last month. They don't pass there, so they wait and they come, they get in front of my place, they're already downshifted a couple gears, and the throttle's down, and it's a no passing zone. They pass every day there, 100 miles an hour plus. It's the motorcycles first, the next dangerous people, I'm sorry to say it, is the rescue crew. They need to get, they're going, but they drive just as dangerous as the motorcycles at 100 miles an hour. I'm sorry to say that, but it's, needs to slow down. We've got a speed limit down, 40 miles an hour, 5, it's like how, this is our town, we live in this, this is our main street. I go through Main Street, Conway, 30 miles an hour, where the fire station is. This is our main street, 50 miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, so that was, just for the record, that was a private drive after Sunny Brook cottages. Okay, thank you. And then, the next two yellow dots that I was asking about are shortly before the Town Line.
If that's right at the, right at the line, that's my, I believe my property, and my can, what happens there is, just about weekly, there's a rear end, a close rear end accident. I've had three, I've had two in my family, I've had a friend that was rear ended trying to turn into my driveway. I don't, I think most people live on Route 16, kind of have a protocol as to how to turn into their own driveway. We put the directional on, two telephone poles early, we pump the brakes, we look in the rearview mirror to make sure there's no speeding vehicle coming up behind us, we keep this, we keep the tires straight so we don't get pushed into the opposite lane. My two young sons were taught this when they got their driver's license, one of them was rear ended, just a minor one. We, a lot of times, we're safe, but the car behind us isn't. They'll stop behind us and alls they have is brake lights, and people don't seem to see those. I can't, I can't think to why, distracted driving probably. The first thought comes to speed limit, but I don't believe, and I'm glad law enforcement is here tonight, because enforcing speed limit, having a speed limit, enforcing a speed limit are two different things, and I think it's a, a challenge for law enforcement to do that. We don't have our own police department, we can't tell a police officer to sit out there all day. We, we contract with the Sheriff's Department, who does a very good job, but they're, they're thin. Speed limit is a different thing, it's, I don't believe these people here control speed limit. I think they'll take your concerns, but my concern is that we upgrade this road, we, we widen it, we pave it, and from what I've heard, people are gonna travel what they feel the speed limit should be. And if, if it's, if it's upgraded and it, it looks nice, I'm afraid they're gonna go faster, so, that, that's my concern. I'm, I've, I've been on that road for almost 30 years, and, and the last 10, it's been pretty bad. Thank you.
That's a great question. The Commissioner of the Department of Transportation actually sets it, or she has the authority to set speed limits, and she delegates that to the State Traffic Engineer, who is in our Bureau of Traffic. He's gonna tell you probably the same thing that I'm about to, I'm just gonna paraphrase a little bit because I'm not an expert on speed limits. Kelly is correct, generally what we find is that people will travel the, the speed that they feel comfortable. So, we can, we can change speed limits in a couple different ways. We do a speed study, and that speed study shows that people are traveling, the operating speed at plus or minus five miles an hour that we feel that that speed limit should be. So if we find that average speeds are 45, then the speed limit could possibly change. So however, there's two ways to actually fix the problem. There's, there's one where we can construct improvements that actually lower the speed, and then therefore, we could actually do the engineering study, and then, then change the speed limit. Or we can make the roadway, as Kelly suggests, as, as we make the roadway safer, such that they can travel at that speed that they're desired to speed. So, just a couple things, like, I want to make sure that, that these cars, these survey cars are gonna be very valuable for us to bring that message back. And if you want to see improvements that change and lower the speed limit, then that's something that the team can look into. But we want to hear from you as far as that, and I think this, this discussion is very valuable. Very similar to the improvements in other parts of the state where they actually will, will change and put physical features in, curbing, or change in, in lane striping such that it just, it, it provides a visual feel that people need to slow down. So, I answered your question a couple different ways. The Department does set speed limits, but it's based on an engineering study, and that is the traveling speed that people are, are finding. So we did a quick analysis, and people are traveling at higher rates of speed, and that's what you're seeing. So for ideas to the design team that you may put down, is if you want to see certain sections of the roadway get lowered, I would certainly advocate that you, or suggest, sorry, that you put that, that improvement down. I hope that helps.
Thanks. The next intersection of concern is Bald Hill Road. Is there anyone that can speak to Bald Hill Road?
Hi, my name is Alan Savory. I, my house is located right at the intersection of Bald Hill and Route 16. So, as far as this spot, it speaks to what many people have been saying, where the drivers are driving too fast already, and like he, like the selectman there was saying, when you have to pull in, you know, you, there's a way to do it, you're always fearing someone's gonna rear end you, or if not you, it's the guy behind you that's slowing down for you. I've, I've personally witnessed a couple of accidents there. My kids get the school bus dropping them off there, and, you know, I've seen like in a bad thunderstorm where the school bus stops, the person behind them stops, and then the person behind them didn't see and slammed into the back of the person behind the bus. I've also seen in some of the more weather conditiony type, type occasions where people slid off into the wetlands area right over there, on the opposite side from Bald Hill. So yeah, that, that area is very difficult for, you know, just when people are kind of trying to turn into Bald Hill and, in that spot. And just so I don't say anything, because I also have another dot on the next area that she's gonna be addressing. It's the turn that comes just before Bald Hill Road, when you're heading north, between the Tanglewood Motel and Bald Hill, basically right around the Valideris's trucking area. I was personally involved in a fatal accident in that spot, back in 2004. The girl that was in the car with me, she was killed. We were coming around that corner, heading south, and as you're heading around that corner, it's basically a blind corner. You can't see until you get to, basically right in front of Valideris's trucking, where it opens up and you can see further down the road towards the south. And in that spot, in that instance, there was a woman that was coming across the, coming north, and she was on the wrong side of the road, on makeup or something like that. She was fully in the wrong lane when that happened, and we had no time to react, and bang. And I know a couple other people have put some stickers up in that area, so maybe they'll speak to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. So that's, kind of leads into the next question, as you said, there's a, kind of a stretched out cluster of dots in that area, Valideris, Tanglewood Motel. Is there anybody else that would like to add thoughts about that area?
My name is Laura Gwamin, and I'm the owner of the Tanglewood Motel and Cottages. My first thing I'd like to say is, I don't understand why people that drive on the road should dictate how fast they're gonna go in front of my property, okay? That's like saying, we're, I'm drive the way they want to go. I don't accept that. Our police officers do a great job. Where I live, there's no place to pull anybody over. You have no rule. My, I have guessed that leave, because trying to get into my way is so dangerous. I have no exit signs, people run them over, they're going right through it. Now I just did a little run today. All right, at the Shakora Post Office, at mile marker 64.8, it's 30 miles an hour. At mile marker 65, it's 35 miles an hour. At mile 65.2, it's 50 miles an hour. Again, at mile marker 70.4, there's another 50 mile an hour. At mile marker 74, it goes down to 40 miles an hour, okay? There are four school buses between five miles, the 60, I'm sorry, I'm getting upset. From mile marker 65 to mile marker 74, we have the Fellowship, we have Olson, we have the Piper Trail, we have the Ledge Park, we have businesses on both sides. We have Albany Pet here, we have the Moose Club, we have the Bald Hill Road Turnoff, we have the Boxing Company, Veladiers, Tanglewood Motel and Cottages, Brookwood Park, Petland Abo, Construction Company, and Snow Shop. Everybody's turning into these businesses, and I don't know about anyone else, but I'm losing business from it, you know? I think that I don't, I mean, I'm gonna go change the speed limit. If people in the car can dictate how fast y'all gonna say the speed limit's gonna be, then I'll dictate what I'm gonna put on the sign. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, and I know you didn't do it, and I don't mean to be angry, but I am angry. And I'm angry because we lost a little boy that was here on vacation, and, and we had four children lose their parents. Four children lose their parents, why? Because you can't straighten that road. What are you gonna do, go into my wetlands? You gonna go into Swift River, Swift Brook? Or on the other side, you're gonna take property from eminent domain? It's just that one severe corner. You have no room to do anything. The only thing you could possibly do to help us is to lower that speed limit. Cops can't pull anybody over, there's no side road. The trucks go by, we can't put air brakes on because they say it's a corner and it's dangerous. At 4 o'clock in the morning, my house shakes, you know? It all has to do with speed, so if we could just try and do something on speed without a 10-year survey, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kasuki Chiramanis, and I live directly across Laura and the Tanglewood cottages. I'm on the inside of the blind curve, so every time I pull out of my driveway especially, it's absolutely terrifying. I, whenever I'm running any errands, doing anything, it's all, I try and plan it in clusters so I don't have to leave my driveway more than once a day. And it's just, there's absolutely no visibility coming around that curve, so when I pull out of my driveway, the people that are flying around that curve are always beeping at me and honking, and it's so scary and unsettling and frees up every time you're pulling in and out of your driveway. So, definitely having the lower speed limit, I think, would help. And just for me personally, on the inside of that curve, I'd love to have some sort of mirror, or arrows, or something, because there's no visibility. Thank you.
Thank you both very, very much, we appreciate you sharing your concerns. I just want to move down the corridor a little bit, we've got two dots, one near the end of the southbound truck lane. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see her on.
Hi, my name is Shirley Mills, I'm at the Red Schoolhouse, and I can literally say honestly, that if I open my door, I can give a high five to people in 16. But I noticed over all the years I've lived here, 20 years, the speed limit, that I noticed, and especially, nobody talks about it, but the 18 wheels. I don't know if you saw the speed they're going, some of them, but that's scary. And winter, that's a problem. I'm always nervous in winter when black eyes come, because I did call my husband, we called, especially in front of Valideris, at that time, that year, and it was black eyes and we didn't even notice, and the DOT wouldn't know either, because it just came like that. And we give them a call, they were really fast to come, and put the, the salt, and, but how scary it is, when you think about it. So, the speed limit is really a problem. That, we really have to, it's really true.
I'm Mark, I'm her husband. Just talking about the Valideris in your property, Tanglewood, there might be an opportunity for the state right at this moment to purchase Valideris's property, because it's for sale. And they might be able to hook that road around the backside. It's just, just a thought. I mean, he, he wants to sell it bad, obviously, so you might be able to get it. I don't know, I don't know the whole, you know? But I'm just, you know, there might be a possibility to do something there, because that is a dangerous spot. I don't even, I've, I've tried to go, have my daughter stay there a couple times for, to stay there for over the night, and, and just trying to get in there, just to get, to rent the place, I'm scared to death, I'm trying to get in there. You gotta, you gotta move fast, you know, when you turn, you can't just hang out there. So that's one of them. And there's, there's plenty of spots like that up and down the road. I've been here for over 20 years now, and, I mean, where I am is not bad, because I have a straightaway, pretty much I can see 300 yards or more each, each side. As soon as you get past that, then there's another big curve, and again, and, I mean, basically what I do, I have to end up driving faster, because everybody else is driving fast, and if somebody's behind me, and I want to go and turn into my driveway, I just speed up, so I got room behind me, so they're not gonna end up hitting me in the back for pushing me off the road, which works well, you know? But otherwise, you really have to watch both sides of the road yet. I mean, they're, they're passing me before I'm even turning into my driveway, you know? And it's not just, not just motorcycles and cars, it's, it's 18-wheelers as well, and they're honking on their horns and everything, because I'm just trying to slow down on my driveway. I mean, the speed, I don't know if they're ever gonna get a handle on that, because these people do whatever the hell they want. You know, they're coming from other areas, they don't care, and I think if you widen the road, it might make it worse, I don't know. So, I mean, there's a lot of things, a lot of questions to be looked into this, because this is a very, I mean, I've lived in a lot of different countries, different areas, and different main streets, and many different towns in the past, and I've never seen anything like this particular one. This one has been, this one's completely different than any other kind of, what you want to consider a main street or a town, so.
Thank you for your comments, Mark. It's been three minutes, so we need to move on to the next.
Hi, Bill Lake, I own property in Albany next to Nickerson Road. I put, helped promote that area to feed the trailer park out back, there's severe mom traffic going into that. It's our only passing zone in this whole thoroughway that we're talking. This section of road, from the Conway line to the Tamworth line, or of course Shakora and Lake, is a problem. Rock and Lake, is a problem. It's a huge problem. Now, thirty miles an hour, everybody's got a great idea, but if you put it thirty, they're gonna drive fifty. If you put it fifty, they're gonna drive seven. And that's just the way it is. The traffic flow has changed throughout this valley. I've been here since nineteen seventy-two. I moved to Wildwood. I've hunted this land, I've walked this land, I've helicoptered this land. I built roads. I came from an area in Vermont where they put a section of road on Route Seven up in the mountains to bypass a thoroughway. This is the bottom line. It does not change. It continuously gets worse. The traffic flow may not be bumper-to-bumper anymore, because they've alleviated it somewhere as a north pond. The traffic flow is still here. The North Country has opened up recreational areas for four-wheel and snow machines. So winter and summer, Friday nights, Sundays, back and forth, they're going by seventy, eighty miles an hour. Sixth-place snow machine trailers, it doesn't matter, okay? It doesn't stop. The only way to fix this, you can look at me like I've got two heads, and you can go look at the three dots that I've put way out in the woods, is start down by the TP storage, go in the backwoods, and bypass this whole situation right to Chakorah Lake, and be done with it. You've got nine million now, you've got Tamworth, you've got Madison that can join in on this, you've got North Country Council, and you've got your president saying he's got money for infrastructure. The time is now to straighten this out. It's not getting any better. I've built roads all over the state. Route eleven down in Delmar, that's bypassed. The one-on-one section, in the eighties, I did that section there. I've done Frankonia Notch. Nothing has changed in this area to motive. I know, we're geograph...
Bill, can you wrap it up? Cut it up on three minutes. Thank you.
Water and rocks. But I think you guys gotta look into this. And then we have a certain roundabout.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Um, we're moving forward, then. I just wanted to ask the gentleman who put the dots along the truck lane and along Ledge Pond Road. We spoke about it at the map, if you wanted to speak to those?
Noah Coleman, Albany resident for all my life. The top of the passing zone where the most recent really bad accident was, is also a spot where my uncle was killed, about fifty...two years ago, and it's the southbound passing hill on that stretch, which I believe was one spot that I marked. You know, I don't really know how you can change it a whole lot, other than maybe possibly shifting into the hill a little bit and getting rid of the curvature, and the top of the passing zone enters into a blind zone, and simultaneously, at the end of the day, you're in a sunspot, so it's tough. The lower section, where the Ledge Pond Road accesses into our facilities, is the other spot that I marked, and we were going to approach the DOT about putting in a slip lane there for our driveway, and, you know, we're in the process of some bypass, reacquiring lands that had been previously taken, so maybe that's something we can work on. But those are the two spots that I hit. Speed is a big item on that whole stretch, the truck traffic, and, you know, we try to control our truck traffic, but there's a lot of traffic, so that's probably all I have.
Okay, thank you. So that leads to the biggest cluster of red on our map, which is the intersection of sixteen and one thirteen. So we'd like to hear from a few people about your thoughts at this intersection.
John Ruin, Tom Madison, I'm a selectman down there, been there twenty-two years. How's this? John Ruin, Tom Madison. Uh, I've been here thirty, thirty-two years. Probably one of the worst intersections to get out of on a Friday night or a Saturday morning. Most intersections are ninety degrees, you look left, you look right. Just tonight, getting out onto Route sixteen, I didn't see a guy coming out of Wildwood, and immediately got him, he was turning left, he comes stopped here. That is a terrible intersection. It has to be squared off, or teed, whatever you call it. But that, if you're turning right to go to Conway, you're gonna turn ahead more than ninety degrees to see guys coming over that hill at fifty miles an hour.
Yeah, I travel that road every day. That intersection, like was said, is probably the worst intersection I've ever encountered. I come the opposite way. I come down the hill and take a right into Madison, and on my way home, I'm coming out like you're stating, and DOT, the drivers that I know, because I work in municipality, it's a joke as to how many times they replace that stop sign. The stop sign is notorious, because coming down the hill, people will lose traction wanting to make the turn and take that stop sign out, and they replace it, and they actually just...they just stub it at the bottom so they can screw another one on. Coming, like you're saying, coming out, the passing lane coming south, people will stop short, thinking they're doing your favor, letting you out, and there's traffic streaming by them on their right side. You can't go out, so it forms a cluster, is what it does, and if someone's coming out of Wildwood, there's no telling what's gonna happen. I've seen a lot of close accidents. Of course, unless we have it on a chart, it doesn't mean a whole lot, but I think near-misses should count. I've had near-misses there. I've had near-misses everywhere, I guess. But no, I...and I'm gonna try to push a new project on that, I'm working on that, but I don't know if...that's a big project. Whether we can incorporate that into what we're trying to do, I don't know, because that's gonna take a lot of funding. But there are other additional funds that we can look for, and maybe someone else can speak to that. That's more than what I know. But yes, that's a bad intersection. Thank you.
Hello, Al DiMarino. I live on sixteen as well. Uh, just talking about...
Wildwood. Wildwood, can you hear me?
As long as you can hear me, that's all that really matters, Don.
On the television, right?
Peter, Peter. Someone else is talking.
You wanna talk? Oh, I didn't see that. Excuse us.
That's okay. So anyway, in that section, if you were to put a rotary in that area, don't know if it's possible, but that would alleviate some of the speed, because you have to drop the speed to hit that rotary, and it would give a nice visual effect for all the way You know, however, it would be difficult for big trucks. However, that may be something to look at, to alleviate some of that. Look at ninety degrees, trying to come out of there, traffic flowing ways, so don't know if that's a possibility, but if so, maybe that might alleviate some of that and
Hi, Kristen Stelmach. I live in Wildwood, so I have the kind of opposite problem. Every time I come out of Wildwood and try to go left into Conway, I'm taking my life in my hands, it feels like. Even if there's nobody coming from Madison and nobody headed south, trucks come and cars come flying down that hill, because they don't realize they're supposed to be slowing down. It's terrifying. I've seen and hear a lot of accidents at that intersection. I worry a lot about the teenagers in our neighborhood, learning how to drive and having to pull out of there. And then I also...I work in Plymouth, so I come from the south-north, trying to turn left into Wildwood is also terrifying. Most of the time, just keep going, turn around, and then go back so I can make a right-hand turn. But I don't know how to fix that either. I don't know if a roundabout's the right answer. I think a rumble strip, you know, across the road could be a Band-Aid, but that would be really disruptive as well. I don't know what the answer is, but it's really scary, and I worry a lot about my friends and neighbors and folks in Madison, everyone at that intersection.
Colleen Corm. I have lived my whole life at this intersection. The first half of my life was growing up in Madison, so coming out from that direction, and a little over twenty years in Wildwood, coming out from that spot. Wildwood has, I think it's fifty-five lots in there, so it's a lot of people. And this is a four-way intersection that is diagonal. It has a tremendous amount of congestion there, which has increased over the years. And it's coming from four directions. It has two turning lanes, which if, you know, one going south, one going north, and if there is a car in both of those turning lanes, you would collide if drivers don't figure out what to do. So at that intersection, it's generally people...it's intense confusion as to what the right-of-way is, who goes, when they go, and who gets hit. So it's really from every direction, and I would say that the entrance to that neighborhood needs to be re-looked at in order to deal with it. Fatalities have happened there for as long as I can remember. My father was a witness to a UPS truck driver being killed coming out of Wildwood when I was a teenager, and I see accidents there all the time, know people all the time. I did not see any data on that intersection in the paperwork we were sent, so that's concerning, because there are so...right, it's...you can't even count, I don't...but for it to have no data, that's concerning. The obstructed views there include the hill crest, large trucks turning north and south. Out of Route one thirteen, it's right where Coleman's is, so even regular pickup trucks obstruct the view if you're turning left, south, from one thirteen onto sixteen, and a vehicle is up the side, and you can't see who's coming. So the hill crest, the large trucks, high grass that doesn't get cut back, branches, snowbags in the winter, turning lane when it's full, going south, turning left onto one thirteen, it backs up, and then you can't see anything. Speed is not dropped in that intersection. There is no warning of the intersection coming up over the crest of the hill. I remember that fatality, the stop sign on one thirteen was a yield sign, and it was changed to a stop sign. That's the only improvement that I'm aware of, and that was about fifty years ago.
Colleen, we're at thirty minutes. If you can wrap it up, thank you.
So, uh, yeah, I guess I'll leave it at that. I guess I covered most of it. What I'm noticing, though, is the green dots where we say it's okay, that's where it's forty. The rest of it is fifty miles an hour, so I agree with the speed limit being an issue.
Here on Conex, I lived in Wildwood also. I was there when the UPS driver went across lines of traffic going to the private, when it used to back up six miles. We couldn't allow the house on the weekends, okay? It's good. If we don't have that traffic, we don't have the shaws, or food stores, or garages, or anything else. You have to recognize where we live. As Pogo, a comic strip character from the forties and the seventies set on Earth Day, we have met the enemy, he is us. All these things you talked about have to do with human decisions, all right? Yes, we have to watch out for people, not driving crazy, driving crazily, not watching where they're going, taking chances. That's the youngins out there now, and it's part of life. Speed limits, wider lanes, all these things will not solve the human problem. Doesn't mean we get angry and try to do punitive things and so forth, or get more conscious. No. We act as humans, should we. We are America. And if I...if you've been all over the world, you see a difference. America is a place where you can live your human dreams. Yeah, you gotta put up with shit, you gotta do this and that, but you can be good people. And it's like, if anybody knows about hunting, you know, and Africa's a good example, the weakest taken down are the ones on the edge of the herd, okay? That are sick, that aren't part of the herd, and take chances. Likewise with humans. Take care of our life is the most important thing we can do. We can't legislate everything. A UPS driver killed himself, okay? He went out, trying to cross through a tractor trailer coming one way, and a loaded steer carrier the other way. Steer carrier hit him, drove him into the tractor trailer, he was going to cross. That's a dangerous intersection, and commenting on that, which I inadvertently got up the dude, we tried to close that intersection. You don't have to spend any money, just we'll plant trees on it, so nobody can come in or out of Wildwood. We're skewed to the road to Madison. That's a problem. We wanted to continue our road that goes up the hill to the road that goes in the back of us. We used to go to Waldorf School and the Beaver Ponds back there. Goes up between what Coleman's place is now. That'd be our entrance and exit. The traffic is more controlled at that point, you have better vision, you don't have bushes in the way, and it allows for the people going to Madison and so forth to have a clear turn. It's common sense. I used to be involved in city planning in Philadelphia, other parts of...
Peter, we're at three minutes, if you can wrap it up.
Thank you. But that's in a sense of, we can't just talk it away, it's through our actions as human beings.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you for being here tonight. All things unique this way. We have towns, we have to get together, we care.
I'm Kathy Ryan, I'm a former selectman. I've lived in town since nineteen eighty-two, and not to beat the Wildwood Road to death, but I've lived there since nineteen eighty-two, as I said. And that development has grown a lot. It used to be, I was one of maybe five full-time people in there, so now what's happened is it's mostly full-time people in there, so A, there's a lot more traffic coming in and out of that section. B, Noah said something about the sun, and he's absolutely right. When I would bring my son to school at Kennett, and people in Madison would be waving me through with the reflection of the sun, I couldn't see them, but my son, in the passenger seat, could see it. He'd say, "Mom, they're waving you through," and I couldn't see it. When he got his driver's license, he said to me, "Mom, you're absolutely right. I can't see them waving me through the intersection." One of my other neighbors is teaching her teenagers to drive, and what she's taught to them, and I have taken on this tip, is always look to the left, so that the people that are in Madison waving you through, they can't see you, because you're just looking to the left, and it alleviates that issue. But that's how things have developed, and things have gotten busier, and that intersection. And yes, speed coming down over that hill, whoa, pulled out a couple of times, and you think you've got it, and somebody's right on your tail. So, thank you.
Okay, that leads us to the last location I wanna ask about. We've got a cluster of four yellow dots just south of West Main Street and Conway. Is there anybody that can speak to that area?
I'll speak to that. One of those dots were mine, and I've just seen so many accidents coming in and out of the Beep Beep parking lot or almost there. It's very dangerous right there. People are traveling more than forty miles an hour, as posted, and you're just taking your life into your own hands. Never mind when an eighteen-wheeler stops to go into Beep Beep, and they parked their car on the side of Route sixteen, there's no way to see around that. You're taking your life in your own hands, trying to get out of there to go south. It's horrible.
Thank you. So that ends the walk through the role plan, Jason.
That's great. I have one more comment that Ms. Collins asked me to read into the record. It's from Lisa...
It's from Lisa Lynn, I believe, from 59 Tabor Circle. Kelly, thank you for the clarification. I apologize for the late email. However, others involved will not know the extent of the issues at the intersection unless I share it with you. So here I go. When I'm sitting at the bottom of Wildwood and I'm trying to take a left turn, other than observing drivers driving often fast down the hill heading north on 16, the people across the way coming from Madison 113 frequently don't notice and/or look across to see if people are sitting to get out of Wildwood entrance. That is one of the issues. There have been close calls with vehicles driving north and south, i.e. a car crash. The other issue is when driving 16 south and slowing down to the right into Wildwood, the cars behind me come very close to clipping my car or driving into my car, especially if there's someone waiting to turn left to 113 into Madison. This is often scary. Hopefully this is information that will be useful. Great. Any other comments or questions regarding the role plans?
You guys be taking more comments or just is this the form?
Yep.
I just had a general, Michael Brooks, I'm the fire chief in Madison. Lived in Madison my whole life. This is an approach that we're discussing. When these bad accidents happen and it has to be closed, that traffic is redirected through 113, comes through Madison, exacerbates the last intersection you were discussing. But the rates of speed, they're still traveling Route 16 speeds on 113 through Madison.
So I just have, I just have a couple of points. I'm Bob King. I'm the chief of police in Madison and I will reiterate what Mike said, that we are the detour, if you will, to get around Route 16. So I looked up some numbers today and the traffic count that is measured or is used for this design is about 8,900 cars, which is the average daily traffic. That measurement is taken after Labor Day in September and it's used with a formula to calculate the traffic volume for the entire year. However, if you look at another traffic count that is on the Albany-Conway Town Line, that number jumps up to, for the same ti- I'm sorry, that number's taken in June and that number reaches, last year it was 12,580. That's the average daily traffic volume going into Conway. I can tell you there's not 6,000 cars coming out of Madison a day to achieve that count. So that's heavy. And to show you how heavy that is, the Spalding Turnpike for that same time period coming out of Rochester at exit 16 is 15,968. That's 78% of the traffic volume going into Conway from Route 16 as coming up from the south. Needless to say, goes the old saying, you're fitting 10 pounds of manure in a five-pound bag. These roads cannot handle that traffic volume. And when you have a speed problem that exacerbates it along with narrow shoulders, you can look through the entire map here and one thing you'll see is that you can't see the road clearly. There's trees that cover up a portion of the road, which shows you how narrow the road is. Speed limits, I understand, there's a whole science that goes into speed limits with engineering studies, but they're only as useful as the enforcement that goes into them. Albany needs to, and I've spoken with Kelly about this, Albany really needs to invest a lot more money into enforcement. And the road needs, it needs to be widened out here. It really does. And the reason for that is, is if you get a flat tire or if your car breaks down or if somebody's walking or if somebody loses their dog or something, there is nowhere for them to go. If you're sliding off the road in the wintertime, you're going to meet a tree. So again, this is no, none of the fault of the policing that you have here now, but you've had 38 car accidents in Albany to this date. The only one I can compare it to is my own town of Madison. We've had 19. That's this year. So your enforcement, and again, the sheriff's department is responsible for the entire county and the state police is well understaffed at this point. But your traffic enforcement to this point has been 95 car stops in the town of Albany. Of that, 54 of them have been on the cank. That leaves 35 out here on Route 16. Now, I don't know if anybody's ever traveled through Moulton Borough by the Moulton Borough Elementary School. They have a reputation. It's 35 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour. You go 31, you're getting stopped. Same thing used to go for in Tamworth when I was growing up. I got nailed there more than once coming by public service. You went a mile over the speed limit, you were getting stopped. If you want to have that reputation in Albany, there needs to be enforcement. There needs to be strict enforcement. It can be done. I understand it takes money and takes infrastructure, but it's something that Albany should seriously consider looking into. Thanks.
Are there other general comments? We are in that portion of the agenda. If there are people that have general questions, not necessarily relevant to the role plans, we're here to answer them.
Dean Monsieur, I also wanted to know if this is the last day to add a comment or not, or if there was like another comment period that people could email you or call you?
Yep. Great question. That does bring up that the chair had also asked me. So these are our survey cards. It's a first-class stamp. If you just want to bring it home, you can also scan it in if you have that technology and you can email it to me. My contact information is at the bottom. No, it's open. So we are not, not going to close it at any point while, while we work on what we have up in front of us as well as digesting the information that we heard tonight and then we start to strategize. And certainly I feel that it would be expected that I follow up with the town select board just to kind of understand what direction that we might progress over the next six months to be able to come back to the town. So fully intend to have more comment period.
Just an FYI, the town of Conway is very concerned about their traffic levels and they were talking about pushing the state to do a traffic study up there. So your phone's going to ring from Conway probably pretty soon.
Sure. That might be a great opportunity for Nick to speak up about North Country Council's role in advocating for projects. So the department here is really focused today for this project is focused on the 29597 project and looking to see where we spend our money within the corridor. There's other opportunities. There's under, other funding programs available and it might be a great five minutes that Nick could speak to if you don't mind.
Thank you. Name's Mark McConkey. I'm state rep, but also vice chairman of Public Works and Highways, where a lot of these projects are financed, decided, joined by Gene Chandler here, the former speaker. Seb McIlair was here. It's really pretty impressive to see so many selectmen, the existing board, Dorothy, Rick and lady in back that I did not know, that have shown up here to talk so well of their town. I was invited by Kelly Robitelli to bring some other thoughts to this and I'd like you to consider these. First, I look at your information and the right-of-way on average is 66 foot wide. And your comment is that the roadway is 26 to 30 feet wide. I would like to see a map generated and at least put online that then X's out in that 66 foot, all the areas that the lady has talked about that are environmentally sensitive. That eliminates quite a bit of improvement that can be done through there because the cost is so exorbitant to mitigate those items. So I'd like to see that. Number two, there was a conversation, Rick reminded me, four years ago. We met with the commissioner and we did a safety audit up Route 16. We started in Osiphe and ended in Conway. The intersection at 113, Wildwood and the Coleman intersection was great interest. We spent a lot of time there. And I had always thought about how it is to turn out of there when I'm pulling machinery and I never knew about the issue with Wildwood. Buzz came out and talked about that famous stop sign that they have modified themselves to be a breakaway so that they can put the sign up and they put it back up themselves. So there's a second pool of money. It's not as large as the federal money, but it's safety money. So I think you need to look and we will help with the state and we will work with the commissioner. And I would think that is one of those intersections that certainly should incorporate that money. And then once you figure out the worst intersections with these folks, again, you use that pool of money. I'd like to hear more about constructing to go slow. I have the same problem whether we're talking in Madison on Route 41 coming into 113, if we're talking to people that live on 113 through the curbs. I'd like to hear that, that explained more, striping, curbing and all of that sort of thing. So I just want to say I'm very impressed by the number of residents. We've worn them down. They've gone. The number of town officials that care enough to be here, state officials that have traveled quite a distance. And I think the, they are sincere, the Albany selectmen in having this done once and have it done right.
Mark?
Todd, prevention from rust bucket repair. I live right down the street. I would like to know how I could get on your DOT mailer so I didn't have to get invited tonight.
I'm not quite sure I fully understand. Are you looking for?
I have two registered voters in my house that we pay taxes on my property. I live on Route 16. I have a business on Route 16. I received no letter about this meeting. That is what I'm upset about.
No, and I apologize for that, sir. I did speak with Kelly Rotuck, who did not receive a letter as well. I did not receive any returned mail, so that's something I'll follow up. We do have a list of 80-plus addresses that we sent out and I will certainly follow up with that, but, and I will verify that you're on the list. But we'll do, we do our best and I apologize for that inconvenience.
Todd, I don't know about you, but, Todd, I don't know about you, but I have a P.O. box and I believe the state had my actual address, so it's. Yeah, see, I think mine probably came to my address and was sent back because I don't have a mailbox.
Only get one more, Will.
Just like to point out, still like again, I did talk with you on phone. Had a lengthy conversation. At least, or at best, we have a little money to spend here. Some of the best drivers we have from Rochester to this area belongs right in Shurro, it's the dual lanes. That one section of the road alleviates some of the frustration that people have, the passing. It's not a truck situation. We've got some truck lanes, but there's, as things have evolved in years, the sight distance has been closed and we've lost a lot of passing zones, period. And this is a frustration from Conway down through here and that's what we're seeing. A lot of people are seeing a lot of problems. And there is. There's problems all the way down through. There's deaths that's happened for years down what we call Dead Man's Corner going around just before Shurro Lake. So there's, there's a lot of problems on the section of road. This part of the state has always been told that we were going to get a bypass. We've taken a blind eye to it and nothing has ever been done. This is an old road that if you even decide to do something, is going to cost you probably more by just patch-jobbing it because you don't own a lot of the sections. There's sections, like up through my section, they only own a small percentage of the road right of way. They don't have a full 50-foot of right-of-way through there. They only own 33 feet. So what happens is, and Todd brought it up earlier, is there's a lot of sections in Albany. They're old school. You don't, you're going to have, if you take 15 more feet, you're going to have to take the whole place by end of the week because we've got the whole school in them. So it's going to cost you by the time they get done putting traffic duty, fixing these culverts, they put it in 1973, that are cement culverts that are decayed and gone down through here. And it would be to start up a new road.
Are there any other thoughts or questions for this? Otherwise, I really appreciate everybody's time tonight. It's extremely valuable for the department. We'll certainly take that back. The goal is to be back here spring, summer of '23 and there will be some follow-up conversations, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do you have a sense of how many takings and how much land you would have to take if you want to do your full design?
No, we haven't evaluated that at this time. You know, we're still in the data collection phase where, as Melly explained earlier, and as we sort of walked through, we're still kind of finalizing that. And this is probably really one of the last steps in finalizing data collection before we move into the alternative stage.
One last question. Does DOT or any other part of the state have any resources that could be applied? I think I heard basically everyone in the room say lower the speed limit. And the signs that, or the radar signs that detect speed and flash, is that only through law enforcement? Are there DOT resources for this? Are there grants for this? So a cheap option to at least get people to travel closer to the posted speed limit? And then, again, I just want to reiterate, I feel like the entire room said lower the speed limit. Instead of a million dollars per mile, it's a thousand dollars per mile. It just seems like a no-go.
Sure, I'll certainly take that back to Bureau Traffic. And I fully expected that to be part of our alternatives analysis as we move forward and we would engage Bureau Traffic. So I will certainly take that back and report on it next time we meet.
I just wanted to ask, an immediate solution won't be this project. How do we move forward with the speed being looked at as a more immediate?
No, it's a great question. I think it kind of tags on to the gentleman to my left. One of the things that we can do through the project is to request the speed study with the Bureau Traffic and we have the right people in the room to be able to make that request. So that's the first step. And then, as I kind of roughly explained earlier, they're going to go out and they're going to collect the data to understand what the traveling speed is and create a report. So it probably is a little bit faster, but I would advocate or suggest, I keep saying advocate, is it does, it would be helpful if the town also wrote a letter to Bureau Traffic making that request, noting our project and our conversation, and I would certainly help push that along.
If there's nothing else, okay, one more, Mark?
I just wanted to ask, what is this whole instruction supposed to be representing? Is it for the safety of the people that live on this road? Or is it just to let the traffic that's coming from south to north to get there faster? I mean, is the state actually really concerned about the people who live on this road ultimately?
Yes, we're concerned about everyone.
Especially about the speed.
Especially about the speed.
I guess I'll respond, we are concerned about everyone. Your second part of your question is when the, the funding is available for construction, and currently it's in, 2026 is when our program has it available to, to build a constructive improvement. Now, what's really important for us is to understand what that improvement should be, and so that's, that's our task over the next year, is to really identify the section of roadway that we need to improve. So there's, there's two parts. Yes, we're, we're concerned about everybody. We're going to look at all modes of transportation for the corridor, including local, the residents, as well as the traveling public. But certainly, all the feedback tonight was fantastic, such that we can come back and brainstorm what the type of solutions could be.
Is it possible to do like little towns like Eaton? I noticed when you go right in the, the main line, lane where they have the, the little store there, is it possible to have something flashing and tell people that you're going way too fast than you should? Oh, you did, Sean? All right. Thank you.
So as far as speed limits go, the, there's a, there's a nasty secret about speed limits in New Hampshire. You hear the, the running joke, especially when I was a teenager, that the speed limit signs are a suggestion. Well, that is a tongue-in-cheek thing. They are actually, they're called prima facie posted limits. They are not absolute limits. Absolute limits mean that if you're going 40 miles an hour in a posted 40 mile an hour zone, you can't, you're, you're going the speed limit. If you're, if you're going 41, you could be, you could, you could get a ticket in an absolute speed area. New Hampshire, the only place we have that are the interstates. So what that means is, for out here, if the speed limit is posted 50 and it's snowing, you've got somebody going 50, you could write them a ticket. You're going too fast for the conditions of the roadway. Adversely, if they're going 60 miles an hour, it's sunny, it's clear, they're the only ones on the road, if I write them a ticket and they fight it, I'm going to lose it in court. Because they can say that the conditions were fine for me to go 60 miles an hour. That's, that's the difference between the speed limit. So lowering the speed limit, it's, you know, it, like everybody said here, it's a start. It's not the answer. The answer, like I said, is enforcement. It, it does come with better conditions of the roadway. If you're looking for those speed flashing signs or the tools to help you, the Office of Highway Safety in Concord does provide grant funding to police departments and municipalities for 50/50 matches for things like speed enforcement signs. We actually, my department applied for and was granted about $8,000 in grant funding for extra patrols. So I'm going to take one of my guys off duty, and I'm going to send him out to Route 16 or Route 113 in Madison, and that's going to be his job. He's not answering calls. He's not going to disturbances. He's just looking for speeders or people talking on their cell phone or texting. There are answers out there. I just hope we're, we address the root cause, not the symptom.
What's the time for anyone to get something done about this problem? That's what I would want.
Sir, I, I did respond.
All problems.
I did respond earlier about when the funding was available and.
2026, and it's too long. And you had the bypass, would we do it that way? You threw it away in the trash and said, no, we're not going to do that project no more.
Todd, Todd, we need to speak into the, in the microphone first of all, and.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We need to just finish the thoughts up and.
I'll finish it down home. You guys have a nice night. You might be there next week.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you.
Have a good day. I see how treated this town. Just not used to it. It's okay. Thank you for coming.
So with that, if there's no more comments, I'd like to thank you all for coming. I really love this collaboration with our towns, different towns showing up, and police officers, and especially DOT and North Country Council. I think we can get somewhere, and all that information is very, very welcome. Thank you so much. And don't forget to fill out your survey card and send it in to DOT. Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second. 8:13.